The next thing on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes of December 3rd, 2018 reorganization meeting, or the December 3rd, December 17th, 2018 regular meetings?
None whatsoever.
Second?
All right. If there are no corrections, additions, deletions, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, minutes have been accepted. Next, notices and communications, are there any?
I do have one.
Right.
Um, the Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee met on December 20th, seems like a long time ago. We discussed the proposal for the demographic study. There were three vendors who responded to the RFP. Two of those did not fully respond to the items that they were requesting for proposals. One did. You will see that later on the agenda when we move to that item under business. We also updated the budget calendar and discussed some important pieces that will be coming up soon because it's budget season, including Act One Resolution that we'll see on a future board meeting, vote for that, and other pieces that are tied to this process that's been installed with various groups contributing to the Finance, Buildings and Grounds and keeping all of that content within the committee and then moving it forward for consideration by the board. So, we stop taking you on those two pieces, and we meet the third Thursday of January is our next meeting.
All right, thank you. Next, we have citizens' participation. Christine Miller would like to address the board about the charter renewal at VITA.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Christine Miller. I'm the Executive Director of VITA Charter School here in Gettysburg, and I first want to congratulate the new board members and thank you all of the board members and administration staff that serve the children in our community. And I'm just really here to introduce myself so that you can put a face with my name as we're approaching our charter renewal, which we do every five years. And I wanted to mention the vision of our school, just to give you a little flavor of what our school is all about. And so the vision is that our students at VITA Charter School will all be bilingual and biliterate in English and Spanish, that they will be at or above grade level in all of their academic content areas, that they will be sociocultural competent, that they will interact and engage with diverse populations in very positive ways, and that they will be physically healthy. And I really look forward to working with all of you in the coming months as you consider our charter renewal and welcoming some of you who will be visiting VITA. I look forward to working with Dr. Perrin and other administrators and really just answering any questions that you may have along the way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any board committee reports? You already gave it.
No, I don't think so. Sorry.
Just a reminder that the proposed school calendar from the Policy Committee for 2019-20 is on this agenda as an informational item, and we'll vote on it in a couple of weeks. But a lot of input went into that, and I think the staff, the administrative team, and I know others have reviewed it, and I think we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you. School calendar is always a hot topic every year.
Yeah, nothing from the legislature. Okay, Jim?
Right. Do you have anything, Jim? Oh, okay. All right. Next, we have program reports.
A couple things before I get off to the next board meeting. We're doing an update. Just a reminder for the board members, January 24th, we have a board development session with Ida Brock serving to go through professional development with the entire board. That's January 24th. Again, we'll have a full five dinner at 5:30, and the session begins at 6:00 PM. And I think we'll probably finish up somewhere between 8:00 and 8:30 that evening. Excited to have Ida here, and she's excited to work with our board based on the debt items that we gave her a couple of months ago. Reminder, January 18th is a school day this month. It is the snow makeup day that we've already had, and I think that's all the snow we're going to have this year.
Thanks for checking us.
So is the admin team over there? Yeah, so January 18th is now a school day. Obviously, we're getting close to the end of the first semester, so teachers are extremely busy kind of closing up the first half of the year and getting ready to kind of transition to the second half of the year. So it's a busy time for all of them, and thank them for the work they're going to enable all of that, you know, to occur. And also, as a reminder, the next board meeting is January 22nd, which is a Tuesday given the holiday on Monday. So, January 22nd is the next board meeting. And this point, I'm going to grab you an update right before we go into press.
Just a quick update on the audit, the final draft has been reviewed and commented upon, and the auditors expect that the report will be available by the next school board meeting. So they've worked, and Tom and I've worked through the holidays to get that to you, and we expect it shortly.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Dr. Lay and the administrative team here, who are going to just go through a couple of achievement items. It's kind of a process that we like to put in place, starting this year and then possibly on a yearly basis, then just kind of updating the information. And so I'll let Dr. Lay kind of take it away from there. Appreciate the work that, along with preparing for the end of the first semester and getting ready for the second semester, all these folks got together and kind of pulled the information together. So, again, this is just kind of an overview, so thanks very much.
You're welcome. Good evening. Specifically, Jeremy Lust from the high school and Nancy Aron from the middle school, and Matt Friling worked with us to represent the elementary campuses as we compiled the data. And thanks to Ann Bound, who's over there at the computer, for helping us design an infographic with this information. So, she's going to be changing the slides because this can be viewed in a present mode. Ann, I don't know if you want to say anything more about where it's posted and how the board members can follow on if they're interested.
It is under the scoreboard. There is a direct link right now, Academic Performance Update, and you can access the entire infographic, which is very long. If you'd like to see it in the different chunks in the present mode, there's a link at the very bottom. And when you go to that, that will be right here, which is right for you. And on the left-hand side, I'm already in present mode, but it'll, let me do it for you so you can see it. So you can see the full thing here again, or if you didn't show a presentation, it chunks it, which is how we'll go over things tonight to make it easier for you to view. So you can view the whole district as a glance, or you can do it by chunks.
Thanks, Ann. So she challenged all of us to learn a new mode of presentation, and with her assistance, we've captured some information that Dr. Perrin had met with me and suggested we summarize for the board. So as you mentioned, this is really a snapshot and mostly of our annual high stakes assessment performance. It's not representing the multitude of data that we collect on students throughout the year, but we just wanted to give you an overview of our district because most of this data is then broken down by level, elementary, middle, and high school. So for our district, our current enrollment, and then demographics, as evidenced by the key there, mostly showing our high level of socio-economically disadvantaged students, that piece of the pie, and then the various subgroups that we are also required to report because of our larger percentage of students with English language learners, special education, and all of those. So just some, as we're going to go through the slides quickly this evening, on state performance, I wanted to capture sort of a snapshot, and as we look forward, you'll see, we're going to be showing you the 2018 performance data. There's also inclusive the '17 as a comparison, but you'll see a state performance goal as well. And for 2018, we were able to exceed all state performance for all content areas in all grades that were represented. We exceeded the state growth goal with all grades in all content areas. We have increased our percentage of advanced and proficient students on our state assessments for grades three, seven, eight, and 11 in all the content areas, and then all grades increased in 2018 in science. So that's just kind of a quick snapshot summary of district performance, and now we're going to dive in and look at it more by grade level. So as you can see there, I'm going to be reading from my screen because that's too far away for me, the percent of third grade students in ELA, 73% of our students scoring at proficient or advanced, above the PA average, and we have till 2030 to reach the state goal of 81%. And certainly going at the pace at which we're going, I would expect that that would be exceeded by 2030. For math in grade three, 71% of our learners scoring proficient and advanced, with the state average being 54%, and a goal of 72% in 2030. And both are slightly above this year from last year. For grade four, 63% of our students reaching that advanced or proficient goal, and again, the PA average was 60. We have a little bit more growth to go, or higher achievement to go to reach the 81% by 2030. With math, 51% of our students in fourth grade, state average of 44%, and again, we have some work to do to get to our goal of 72% by 2030. Again, just some slight variances. We improved the performance from '17 in ELA, but we're slightly below that in math in fourth grade. Fifth grade, 62% of our students for ELA, above the state average, not quite at the goal for 2030, but slightly above last year. For math, 56%, and similarly, we are above the state, not quite to where we need to be at 72%, but a little better than we had done in 2017. Moving now to our middle school, 72% of our students for ELA in sixth grade, exceeding the state average, slightly below what sixth grade had performed in 2017. Again, this is comparing a different population of learners, but at that same grade level. For math, 58%, exceeding the state average of 40, but slightly below what we had done with our sixth grade the year before. Seventh grade, 73% of our learners for ELA achieving advanced or proficient, above the state average, and right where we were last year with our seventh grade learners for ELA proficiency. Math, 56% of our students above the state average of 39%, with last year slightly above the 52% in year 17. Eighth grade students, 78% of our students in ELA, above the state average and above the 2017 proficiency rate, with math, 56%, and again, above the 39% for the average of the state, and slightly above what the performance rate was for 2018 with eighth grade, excuse me, 2017. We also wanted to note for our middle school level, there was significant evidence that the growth measure over grades in the middle school exceeded the state standard for PA academic growth in all content areas. So where our achievement was level and, you know, students are doing well, the important thing is we have evidence, significant evidence, that the students grew in all content areas in the middle levels. So we broke down then for PSSA, science performance. Only grade four students in the elementary level take science, with 88% of our students scoring proficient or advanced, above the state average, and above last year's achievement in grade four. Eighth grade, 74%, again, exceeding the state average and exceeding what we did in 2017 with our eighth grade students in math, or excuse me, in science. So then we get to our Keystone exams, and Keystone exams are administered as an end-of-course assessment, so we have students that take a Keystone Algebra exam in middle school, but their scores are banked until they are in the high school. So, but the scores for 2018 that reflect that population of learners who had banked their score or taken that exam in that year, 71% of our students were proficient or advanced in algebra, exceeding the state average, and a nice increase over 2017. With biology, 71% of our students scoring proficient or advanced, and both of those students take that assessment in grade 10, at least for the first time, exceeding PA average, and again, a nice jump from 2017. With our literature exam, 78% of our students scoring proficient or advanced on their banked score or on their score, and again, most of those students take that in high school, PA average of 73%, and last year, again, we have a jump from 67%. So when we look at our, what's attributed as a growth performance, there's lots of variables that go into the algorithm to determine growth, but for ELA in our elementary grades, so this would include students in grades four and five, they don't get a growth score until they take an assessment in third grade, and then they look for growth beginning in the fourth grade. For ELA, 72% of our students showed significant growth. That's actually a slightly below, a 1% below the state average, but exceeding the goal of 70%. Our math growth of 84%, exceeding the state average and exceeding the statewide goal for grade four and five. And science, 78% of our students growing, and that takes into account on all these assessment scores, take into account things beyond just the score in that particular content area, and again, that's all calculated in that algorithm, but 78% of our students showing growth compared to the state average and exceeding the statewide goal. Then we jump to our middle school. For ELA, this would include all students, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, 97% of the students showing growth, and again, you can see how it exceeds the state average and statewide goal. For math, 100% of the students, can't do better than that, state average of 75% and exceeding the statewide goal. Now we just have to sustain that. And then our science, 97% of the students exceeding the state average while exceeding the goal. So that's wonderful news to report for our middle school students.
Dr. Lay, is the 100% value added for growth, is that symbolic of a year's worth of education or is it a year plus?
It looks at a year from when the students took the exam the year before.
But again, a lot of things are...
Included in that algorithm, so, but yes, we look at within that year. All right. I am, I'm going to defer to Jeremy for the high school advanced placement slides so that he can give a little more information about the high school students and the scores for last year.
The next few slides relate specifically to the high school, so I said I'd go ahead and jump in here. I think we've always held our AP programs as a source of pride at the high school, and you see that we continue to have a large number of tests being taken each year. In 2018, we had 300 tests. The yellow bar graph, if you hover over that, is 173, I'm hovering over mine, there you go, 173 test takers taking 300 tests, which is significant. It's actually a dip down from 2017 totals, but if you see the number of students that are taking other rigorous courses, it's not really a concern to see a lower number of total tests being taken. I think the most telling piece on this slide is if you look at the bottom graph that is blue and red, Gettysburg Area High School being blue, and you see the percentage of students earning a three or above, which would earn them college credit in most universities that they would move on to, were exceeding the state average by a decent margin. So well over 75% of our kids are earning threes and above on those AP tests, which is great for them, it's a great learning experience, and it's a money saver in the end as they move off to college. So it's a fantastic sign looking at that data. Moving on to the next slide, some SAT data. I chose the 2017 data for SATs because it has all of the data for the year. If you look at the 2018 data, it isn't totaled yet, but if you look at the College Board site, our scores are actually a little bit higher from what I see at this point. Looking at last year, our average score was 1108 comparatively. We exceeded the Pennsylvania average and the national average, which is a good thing. Not as many students take the ACT test, but we're still sending a few in that direction, and that is 2018 data, and you see that we're again exceeding the state average and the national average, which is always good. On the bottom right-hand side, it explains that of those test takers, 58% of them met the benchmarks for college readiness in all four content areas, biology, social science, algebra, and English composition. So again, that means that in all four of those, they've exceeded the benchmarks. It says that they are well-prepared for college achievement, and that compares to 43% of test takers across the state, so that's also a good sign, obviously. The next slide is about how our students do in industry-based learning. We have Adams County Tech Prep, thankfully, close by, very close by, and a lot of students head in that direction and ultimately take the NOCTI test, and you can see that 32.3% of our students are earning high marks on that or earning NOCTI scores, advanced and beyond. And we also see them earning credentials, which is the next graph down at the bottom. And then the bottom line shows percent complete work-based learning experiences, and that's just showing that we're sending a lot of folks out for work partnership experiences, internships, and when you combine all of that data, as you see at the top, as we compare it to the state, we're allowing our students to experience things that many are not across the board. When you look at 52.6% compared to 23.8, which is the state average, we're offering experiences and students are experiencing what we're offering well above the state averages, and it's good when you can show them a pathway into a successful future. You definitely get buy-in, which turns into increased graduation rates and other positive data. The advanced scores on the far right, you see 24.7% of those students are earning advanced scores on industry-based exams, and obviously, that's well, well above the state average, which again is pretty awesome. This relates to the AP slide that we looked at earlier. Another very positive sign is that we have 77.7% of our students that are taking rigorous courses, which is incredible, and that's looking at the most recent graduating class. So you have many students that are taking rigorous classes and getting experiences like AP, which is 35.4%, but then also, as I noted when we looked at the AP slide specifically, the numbers had gone down a little bit from the previous year, and that's because many of our students are choosing other options, other good options like HAC, and you know, it's sometimes a better option depending on the particular course and the particular kid and what their goals are. So we have 48.1% of our students that are accessing courses like that, which is again incredible, and that goes back to the support that you've given us over the course of time, which is obviously helpful. The CTE program of study, we offer a lot of credits. There's, on average, 36 credit opportunities at the high school for every student, and that allows them to pick up a lot of elective courses, and they can line up programs of study in agriculture or in other tech ed areas, and we see a lot of students that will find in a path that becomes their niche. They access the courses that they're enjoying and that they're looking to move on in, possibly into college, and you see a lot of program completers in our school, which is not the norm everywhere, so that's again a very positive thing, where you see students accessing courses that they find relevant and meaningful, and that sets them up for success down the road. The post-secondary transition to school, military, and work, I looked at this and with a little bit of concern and wondered why we were below the state average, and I'm still a little bit curious about that, and I compared that to some of the surrounding schools in the county, and I wasn't as concerned because their numbers look very similar, just very, very close to ours, and it's just a shade below the state average, and it makes me wonder more about how they're collecting the data, because when you look at the bottom one especially, students that entered the PA workforce, it kind of speaks to the importance of making sure that you're getting your data into the right data banks to make sure that they're collected by the state in the right way, so you're getting credit for the work that you do. And that's something that I think we're all trying to make sure that we're on top of, and it's not an easy thing to do many times. So I'm not overly concerned, but I'd like to check that out more closely when I get a chance, but I think it's more of a data reporting issue than anything. But we're sending most of our students onto post-secondary educational institutions and other good experiences, but that's obviously the continued challenge. Lastly, graduation rates. Our graduation rates look quite good compared to state average in four years, and then there's the five-year cohort as well, which might pick up students that rightfully need another year. There's some students that may be in learning support programs where they're picking up an extra experience, possibly through a program that we set up for them and intentionally draw that out to five years, so that's not a problematic thing in all cases. Our graduation rates look quite good. Obviously, that's all of our goal, to get kids to the finish line, get them there, ready to succeed in whatever they choose to do beyond our school system.
Okay, so just to kind of, so now what? As we look at our data, and just to give you again a snapshot of things we've been working on as a reaction, if you will, to our data, even before we received the high stakes assessment data, we have many other data points that have led us to looking at some curriculum revisions using the Understanding by Design model and partnering with EduPlanet on a curriculum building tool, piloted by high school English department and the middle school science, and we're looking at expanding that to our elementary level where the teachers are asking for us to look at more of an integrated approach with STEM, and we have previewed the tool with that population of teachers and look to hopefully implement that potentially starting this spring, but definitely in the summer. We use a lot of progress monitoring and benchmark data throughout the school year and make adjustments to our instruction. We just finished our mid-year data, and groups, data teams have already met, new instructional groups have already been designed so that we can give very targeted interventions based on what that benchmark data, not... based on what that benchmark data, not an end-of-year data point when it's almost too late, if you will, to respond. And we have adjusted at the elementary level our instruction from more of a, it's referred to as a standard protocol intervention model in the multi-tiered system of support. And we are targeting our interventions and our instruction by giving a deeper look at where students are from the benchmark data with diagnostic assessments. And we have favorable results that have been revealed in our mid-year benchmark data. So teachers are very excited about that and they really are seeing student growth because we are targeting those interventions. We are implementing a STEM PLC with teachers at the elementary, middle school, and one high school teacher. And really looking at implementing a lot more of our project-based learning for this year. And certainly we'll look to expand that. And all of this has been supported by the addition of our instructional coaches. And they've been well-received and we are keeping them very busy. So that's kind of a snapshot. The principals that are here could answer questions or I can answer questions if there are any at this time.
Thanks again for putting this together. Really, this is just kind of a one-time snapshot for the board. This is something that's fluid in schools on a daily basis as a instructional decisions. But I just thought it would be, it'd be great to just take, you know, a moment and say, here's all of this data that comes in and dribbles at times and put it all in one place. And it'll be on the website, so you'll be able to go up and take a look at it. It's something to look at and really it's the decisions you make with data that are most important in terms of what you're actually receiving. So I think that down the road, I think, you know, the data that was presented this evening is really specific to some of the higher-stakes testing kinds of things that we see. But as Dr. Lee mentioned, there are things that go on a daily basis that really are kind of what drive instruction, which are kind of the important aspects of what goes on a daily basis. And we also are working this year to kind of set up for next year. Also taking a look possibly at adding some qualitative measures to some of the things that we're looking at. Done a lot of research in the past on school affinity and the correlation between school affinity and achievement. And I think that if, you know, as well as being proficient on the third grade ELA exam, it also helps to light school. So I think if we can continue to monitor those kinds of things and monitor how many kids are active in things like extracurriculars and co-curriculars and those kinds of things. We'll have kind of an overall picture of, you know, of all of these things down the road. So thanks again for bringing a very busy time of putting this all together. And all of a sudden, the PowerPoint I'm doing later is not so cool. This creative presentation.
A word of congratulations to you, Dr. Lee, and the administrative team. I think those are impressive results. I'm also very pleased that Governor Wolf and his administration, and I know the Secretary of Ed, the Associate Secretary of Ed, Dr. Boltman, Dr. Rivera, have been very open. I was part of a committee that suggested we looked at a five-year cohort because many of us superintendents that were on this committee believe that's important, that students finish. Not that it'd be done in four years. It'd be nice to be done in four years, but the fact that they finish is what's really critical. And to see that they've taken our suggestions and added that to the high stakes reporting out is terrific. I would be interested to learn a little bit more about the historically low-performing subgroups. How our special education students are doing. We have a fair amount of economically disadvantaged kids in our district and then our ESL kids. So at some point, at some point, I'd love to see a breakdown of how they've done as well. I'm assuming they're embedded in the overall here of what we've seen. So my, I'm anticipating the scores there are going to be pretty good as well. Congratulations.
I'd also like to add, the cool factor is there on this graphic. And kudos to you, stretching yourselves. You can, I feel like there's a little bit of each of your personality in here as you made some decisions about what to put in there and how you even captured it graphically. So that team effort is there. Love that hover over factor where some of those pop up. And I do have a couple of questions. Well, maybe one's a statement first. Please don't just leave some of the school board you have, please use it in other places, even if that may be connected to what our new residents are looking at Gettysburg and determining, you know, what's good about Gettysburg. So I believe I understand, so here's the first question. All three elementary schools are represented when you look at the top of the document and it just refers to elementary. So that's lumping, correct? All three together?
Right.
And here's my questions and I'll let you decide who flags them. So collectively, we think are some of the strengths? Collectively, what do you think are some of those areas that led you to the actions that are listed, the action areas listed at the bottom? So like there's a leaf that was made there, just fill in the gap.
We did try and capture strengths area at the top, the global exceeding. So generally, that's what we see. What led us to the gaps? We had known our math achievement at the elementary level had been an area where we had to focus from the 2017 performance. So we implemented a math DIBELS benchmark and we continue to administer that. We sought out a math specialist, instructional specialist at the collegiate level who used to serve our district, Carol Buckley, to come and work with our teams as giving them half-days of release time to really just focus on our data and then say, all right, now what? Do we do instructionally to improve in those areas? And we've continued to do that this year as well, knowing that if we don't continue to monitor, things will slip. And then we've added digital resources, some free, some paid. We continue to evaluate the resources that we have, never wanting to jump that that's the blame factor, but looking at all the instructional pedagogy. And so as all along, looking at what Jason's saying, you know, still making it fun and looking at it from the STEM and interdisciplinary, there's just so many things to think about. But all of that with the idea that learning can be fun and getting, teaching kids to think. So, you know, with that too, then was the implementation of the STEM DLC. So a lot of that was derived from, the state performance on the science elementary is really a literacy score and that students have to be able to read the assessment. So, and as well, just, we looked at more of our DIBELS reading benchmark data and the end-of-year performance. The students we owned, how many of them had stayed below basic, per basic, or exceeded. And when we looked at that and we brought, had the opportunity to consult with Susan Hall from the 95% group, wrote the book about DIBELS and guided us in that we really, that standard protocol intervention model was too rigid for our learners and to really break that down into more diagnostic assessments. So we did that professional development in the spring and the summer and purchased materials and started to implement that this year. We're monitoring that group progress monitoring data. And then we also hope that the results transfer into these high-stakes assessments. But really, so much of what we do to drive our instruction isn't just based on the single end-of-years autopsy, if you will.
And that's key and that is beginning to be reflected in the infographic. Even that you move into some of those pieces that may not have been reported in the past, that are new data that's out there. Look at some of the industry standards and pieces like that, beginning to create a broader view of how the district is doing from many different perspectives. So nice work and stretching yourselves and trying to capture this in something that can be used not only for our board and board.
Just one thing I'd like to add is kudos to you, but please, on behalf of me, and I hope I speak for the whole board, pass this on to your staffs. Forty-plus years in this district and from day one, I've always, when I go out and we're out of this community or in this community, I've always told people, I will put this staff, our staffs up against any other staff in the state or anywhere else. I'll put this district above anybody else. And I think the data has proved my statement to be true. So again, please pass on kudos to your staffs because they're the ones in the trenches. You're leading, but they're in the trenches. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Ms. Bishop, okay? All right, we'll move on to our action items. Personnel, item 10.12 and including item 10.4. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? I hear you none. Ken. Jim.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Alice.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jump to 13, policy, item 13.12 and including item 13.4. There's four policies for final adoption tonight.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. I have not had a chance to read these policies. Am I able to abstain from voting on it at this time?
Yes.
I think that's fair. We do have a form that you fill out to state reason.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Any other discussion? Okay, Jim.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Alice.
I'm staying.
Ken.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jumping to 18, business finance, items 18.1 and 18.2.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I hear you none. Al.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Alice.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That concludes all our action items tonight. Just to refresh everybody, the information item under policy, the school calendar will be voted on the next time. So make sure you look over that and get your questions in to the administration if you have any. The next item, information item is 18.3 to 2019-20 preliminary budget. And I do know Dr. Perrin and Mr. Hunt have some things to present to us tonight.
Yeah, this is just some initial information. I'm certainly not going to go through, these slides look familiar. We kind of start in January building this presentation and then add to it as the spring progresses and more data becomes known. So there are a couple of, there are a couple of things. We always tie, obviously, what we're doing to our mission and vision. There have been four goal areas we've been working with since I came to the district. And this year, we outlined those, as we do at the beginning of each year at a large meeting with the faculty and staff. Student success, student learning, managing resources, and community relations. So those remain similar to the past, so that's what we're supporting. I may stand up because I made five votes. I'm trying to avoid them.
Thank you.
So much like, much like last year, listed some goals for me in my role. As kind of my role to guide the district through the process. Couple of goal continuation of goals from last year and some are just specific to the fact that I'm in year two of my sophomore year. So there's a little bit, you do the second year that you don't do the first year. Number one, obviously, to balance programming and resources. Doing the best we can for our kids to meet our mission while being respectful of the community's resources. That's always the number one, the number one balance. We want to ensure short and long-term fiscal health of the district. We want to follow the process with regards to decision points and continue efforts to close the structural deficit that we began last year. And we always, you mentioned last year too, we're looking at trying to avoid the peaks and valleys with tax increases going from 2.5 to zero to 2.5 to zero. Trying to create kind of a lower consistent increase that can help us meet our goals. Just like we did last year, every board action that I will ask of you will be preceded by a recommendation from me. Our norms for conversations, obviously, questions and constructive discourse leads to a successful process and outcome for all of us in the district. And really, these slides are really just to set up the fact that the first real vote or action that you'll be asked to take is at the next meeting on January 22. And that's really specific to the recommendations regarding the Act One resolution. And for our district, we tend to have what's considered the base index in the Act One world. And this year, it's 2.3%. Some districts receive an adjusted index, a little bit higher, a little bit more ability to raise revenue without going to exceptions, but we're generally right around the base. Next slide, please. You saw the memo attached to the agenda that was created by Brad. And I asked him to do that just simply as a reminder to last year. Because just like last year, when we showed a couple of the expenditures that were going to drop last year and we expected them to return back to a, just getting back to kind of normal curve this year. There were savings last year that as those savings go away this year, they'll look like increase was really is just a return back kind of towards normal funding in some ways. So we'll get more specific with this data as we move through the spring and move towards a final recommendation for a budget. But just didn't want this to get lost with everything else that we do throughout the next several months. So it's kind of laid out some slides that show expenditures in some of those key areas. And again, they were all outlined in Brad's memo that you saw on the agenda. Next slide. Things like healthcare costs. You know, we saw, we saw a reduction in savings for a year. And then as we prepare for 1920, that'll kind of return to more of a normal line. Next slide, please. Similar health savings account contributions. We had some savings there for 1819 and we won't get back to the 1718 level, but more of a return to kind of that general trend. Next slide, please. Staffing attrition. This is basically as folks kind of the top of the pay scale leave and you hire people at the bottom of the pay scale, there is a little bit of savings in salary between those two. So this just kind of shows, because really they end up being almost just like revenue in a way because it's a reduction in expenditure because obviously the cost of the individuals are changing from year to year. So 1819, that's the current year. So certainly, as we move through this semester, we will provide the best estimate that we can based on the information we have. But those aren't things you know in January as people start making decisions for themselves and their family as we move through. But those are kind of the past two years, what we experienced in attritional savings, just given the fact that folks come and go all the time and the cost changes. Next slide, please. Chartered school tuition, obviously, this is one that continues to climb, you know, on a yearly basis. And we slide up just a little bit further towards the bottom of the slide. I think that, yeah, but a, so if you go back to 1617 to what we're looking at possibly for 1920, it's about a, you know, $1.3 million increase. And if, you know, just to put it in context, if you think about from Brad's memo, you saw a 2.3% tax increase, which is our basically the ceiling, our index, is about $700,000. that, you know, over a couple of years, it's about half of just what charter tuition changed. You know, obviously, that's across three years, but you can kind of see it doesn't take too many variables to have a very significant impact on what you can actually do. Next slide, please. And special education costs obviously continue to rise as well, and I put the same, we put the same three-year, you know, trend there, and some of the special education costs also drive out some of the charter, charter school costs as well. And so, and that can change on a yearly basis within most districts for a number of reasons. You can have a number of identified students in special education, which is going to actually have an impact. You can have the type of support received by special education students, so you could have, you know, say ten students receiving itinerant learning support, and then go to three students receiving life skills, and you go from ten to three and increase your costs dramatically depending upon the level of support. So there are a lot of variables in here that drive out these numbers. Next slide, please. So really, the next steps for the board on January twenty second is relative to our Act One index. And if you remember from last year, due to our situation, I recommended that the board adopt a resolution to not exceed the Act One base index of two point three percent for the nineteen twenty budget. This year, I'm going to be making that same recommendation to the board for your vote on January twenty second, primarily due to the fact that as we've done the calculations for exceptions to Act One, we would only qualify for about eight thousand dollars, which is about point oh one percent of what the exceptions would actually drive out. So it's not even worth going down that road in terms of time, in terms of Brad's office working on a preliminary budget, those types of things. So on the twenty second, you'll see a recommendation from me to adopt the resolution to not exceed the base index of two point three percent. And also on January twenty second, we'll provide some more information as we start to build this process for the current semester. Will be a draft kind of revenue worksheet in terms of what we're predicting there. It'll be an unassigned fund balance worksheet to kind of show you from the information you saw in the audit and how it's going to translate then into the spring as we are working through the budget with our administrative team. And also a budget summary draft. And again, on January twenty second, what you have to remember is, a lot of these are estimates because they're unknowns. As we move through the semester, just like last year, as things become real numbers, we update those so that by the time we get to a final budget, I'm recommending something that we can, that to use a board, it's as accurate as it can be at that given point in time. So January twenty second, really, really broad kind of, here's what we have right now, and then that'll be after the action item that asks the board to adopt a resolution to not exceed the index of two point three percent at the next meeting in January. So that's kind of where we are. We're just at the point now where we're getting some information back from the administrative team. We're starting to have further conversations about requests and needs for next year, and so it's, you know, it's one of those processes where, I don't think anybody goes into education for this, but it's the, you know, it's the lifeblood of kind of what we do, it provides the resources to enable all the great things that they do, and as Carlos mentioned, the teachers do with kids every day on a daily basis. So it's highly important, and we take the time, we take the time to do it, and we do it as quickly as we can do it well, and try to bring you the best recommendation that we can, given all those goals I mentioned upfront, short-term and long-term fiscal health, and balancing the needs of the district as well as understanding the situation of the community. Next slide. That's the last one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's.
Jay, Jay's, and I guess Brad. Just to summarize this for me, my logic, this is all the stuff that we discussed when we passed the last budget, not knowing the healthcare changes, we talked about the retirements, and we would see the change and fluctuation between revenue and expenditure, and some of the other stuff that would kick in as we started to look at nineteen two thousand, correct? And if I understand, obviously, those figures aren't ready, but we, did we not, when passing the increase that we did last year, consider that increase as a bridge to help us as we got into the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget?
I think we passed, last year we passed a zero point eight six percent.
Correct.
Increase. So what that was to do was to mitigate some of the impact of some of these things reverting back to their funding, like you said.
Right, and that's what I wanted to check, is as we move into two thousand nineteen twenty, we dealt with this and tried to mitigate that impact, so as you're starting to go to the administration and you're starting to go elsewhere, that still has to be a part of that consideration as you, when you present nineteen twenty.
Absolutely. I think for the most part, it, last year's process was to try to help meet the goals that were in one of the earlier slides, specifically in trying to somehow get toward a more steady approach, and specifically to begin to reduce the structural deficit of the budget.
Correct. And just a little off topic, in one of the other items that you sent us, it related to the high school roof. Let me miss something. I thought we had had that budgeted, we were coming from some other funding source to replace that portion of the high school roof.
We maybe talk about two different things if I'm hearing your question. The money to replace the portion of the high school roof that was damaged is not part of the issue that changes significantly the average funding required for the capital projects fund. The part of the roof that significantly impacts the capital project funding is the rest of that high school roof, and that had not been within a five-year window, now it is.
That clarifies it. So the portion that becomes significant to the high school at this point is what we discussed as we looked at the budget. So now the remaining replacement of that roof comes under the cap.
Yeah, and this, again, clarification, is the flat roof, the rubber roof?
Right, right, I understand. And.
Dr. Perrin, Mr. Hunt, I'm assuming since, exception-wise, we're only eligible for about eight hundred thousand anyway.
Eight thousand. Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Eight hundred thousand. But you're.
Maybe different conversation.
The resolution to stay within the index, I understand why a lot of schools do that and so on. I just hate to see us lose flexibility if you need it. I understand for eight thousand, it's not worth the issue and so on, but you're confident we can stay within that, and I realize there's a lot of unknowns right now.
And I think we have to.
Yes, I'm understanding our friends in Harrisburg have a fairly big surplus, and I'm just wondering, Brad, if you're hearing anything, that school districts will be assisted a little bit subsidy-wise from the big surplus that they're realizing.
No, it would be really interesting to see what the governor's proposal is. I don't have nearly the optimism that you might want me to have. I've seen too many of these budgets, perhaps. It would be nice, but Donald, I think they have other issues, particularly as I've noted before, their financial stability and their ability as a Commonwealth to deal with financial downturns is a priority they're going to have to address as well, so we'll just have to see.
Thank you. The only other thing I was going to say is, that charter school number just absolutely makes me sick. I don't know how else to say it. And I think it was the legislator from Erie, if I'm not mistaken, has introduced some legislation, and I'd be interested in having a discussion with the rest of the board about us maybe doing a proclamation or a letter to the legislators to support that if your school has a online program that is equivalent or comparable and so on, that legislation that those parents then, or people that choose to go outside of the district's offerings would have to pay for that personally rather than that coming out of a really good quality school that people are opting out of for whatever reason, and I realize there could be a multitude of reasons there, but I'd like to see that get some momentum. I do believe that our local man, Dan Mau, would be very supportive of that, and I've talked to him personally about that in the past, and maybe we could even work with him locally. Thank you.
I would echo that, you know, where I stand with the charter schools. I think as a board, we do need to make that decision and be unified and get our message out instead of sitting back waiting for someone else to take action on it, and we have that opportunity.
Would it be safe to say that it would be an opportune time to gather information about Gettysburg's cyber program, what is offered, the cost of a student in the Gettysburg cyber program, as well as information about the costs we are, Gettysburg is paying for kids to go to cyber charter schools outside of our district?
If I may add, that's certainly something that's been brought up before, hopefully it would gain some momentum. Another issue along the same line, I believe, was proposed, at least tangentially by the governor last year, and that is that the tuition rate in the law for cybers be lower than for brick and mortar charter. So even if it went that direction, it would be a start. It wouldn't be as, it wouldn't be as complete as what you're talking about there, but there is at least some rumbling that it might be good for schools to jump on and try to promote.
Right, Brad, and I think what happens, and you heard this with Carrie when she talked to the administrators here about getting that message out and maybe moving some of the positive things academically to the public. I don't know, I think sometimes we're behind the eight ball on our communication to the public. I don't know that the average person realizes the amount of money this district and taxpayer money goes to charter school. It has no accountability whatsoever. You know, and I think as a board, we make a lot of stuff, and we get that communication out there. I mean, it's a tremendous expense.
It's one of the things that, I had a lot of charter school experience in previous districts, given the number of brick and mortars that were in the district, so one of the things that Andrew and I worked on, and Andrew did a lot of the late work and a lot of the site work, was a place in our district, now it's an information site out charter schools, and really about like cost, how much, what they are, what they aren't, what they cost, and so, you know, we've been trying to make sure, kind of, we send something out, that we put that link in there somewhere, because I think it's good for people to understand that they also use public money, and that when they see a billboard with charter school information, that that was their money as well, as well as what we're spending. We certainly, given our needs, wouldn't go out and rent a billboard because of the decisions we have to make with use of our, with use of our money, but, so there are things that we did to even start this year to kind of push the education of that forward in the community.
I'd love to see us get a little more aggressive with that and get that data that Carrie was talking about, and also not just the fiscal differences, but the student achievement differences that we heard tonight. I'd be willing to bet if we did a comparison, we would fare, Gettysburg or the school district would fare pretty well in comparison.
Where are you getting, where's our achievements listed at?
They're on, they're online.
They're on, yeah.
Public sites. Yeah. Here to ready P A M X.
I appreciate that, Jase, because that was one of the things we talked about, and it was a sore for me on the budget process, doing all the unfunded mandates and everything else that comes from the state and picking our pockets. They have a large chunk of our money that we have to deal with.
It was kind of a two-pronged approach, because, you know, we're really proud of the schools that we have, we're really proud of our faculty, we're really proud of our staff, and I think that along with trying to educate the community in terms of, you know, what we are and which charter schools are, it's really, you know, we're in that school of choice mode where we really have to market what we do so that we are the school of choice when people are choosing schools. Based on my experience, and this is one person's experience, and everybody around the tables has different experiences, but based on my experience in dealing with, you know, large districts with lots of charter schools and those types of things, you have to become the school of choice in kindergarten. You have to, as students move through pre-teen kindergarten, because once students pick a school, they tend to stay there unless something significant happens. So the other, the other part of the website that you will see that went along with the charter school information was the information for new families, and the information for new families was about providing information about our programs so that they would make an informed decision. We're not going to tell them that they can't make the decision that they want to make, but we want, what we want to do is make sure that they consider all of their options before making those decisions. And one of the things that Andrew has been working on, and I think perhaps the first one is even up on that site already, is even video tours of the schools, so, you know, a parent could, before enrolling in the school, go on the web and kind of working on that, and I think the middle school is the one that's up?
Correct.
Already?
Yep.
So the middle school.
Oh, yeah.
So thanks, thanks again to put it together, and I would assume that, as the other ones have done as well, we'll have kind of a place where, you know, folks can go on and take a look at that. There are also contacts there, you know, to call, get a tour as folks are considering schools. So I'm only mentioning all of that because I consider it almost like, it's almost like a two-pronged approach. It's informing the public of how their money's spent, and at the same time, being proud of what we're doing and wanting folks to experience that and to be the school of choice for folks out of choosing schools for the kids. So that's, that's what's important, you know, for me, and, you know, as I sit in this role and think of the kinds of things, and Andrew and I meet quite often actually and kind of talk about, you know, what's the next, what else can, what else can we do to, you know, to make that happen? But it's pretty robust right now on the web in terms of that information, and thank, you know, Andrew, because that was a, a lot of the work he did this past spring, and even through the summer was kind of bolstering those two sites, so thanks again.
I'm going to circle back around to Kenny and other board members. So some of the systems we have in place are our subcommittees, and it was agreed upon in the last Finance Buildings and Ground Committee meeting, that the purpose of that committee is the two-way communication. Things the board would like done are given to that committee tied to Finance Buildings and Grounds, which could include finding out more about the cost of cyber charter from the inside look and the outside look to what else is out there. And also, that report back then would come from that committee, which could lead to other committees using our channels and to do that, which could be another committee like Communications Committee could pick up on that and make decisions about how they want to present that information, which could then lead to even the legislative work that Mr. Henderson and Mr. Hesseger use. So trying to use our systems, is that something that we would like to do?
And that's why I suggested, maybe not tonight, we've been here since five o'clock.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to kick the bucket or can down the road, but I think that's something that as a board comes up as a discussion item, and we unify, you know, unifiedly just go that direction. And I think we already talked about meeting with legislative Senator Ali and that, to move forward on that. One last quick question for you, the document you handed us tonight, Brad, to look at, the right to know, any, anything other than that speaks for itself?
I think so.
Does for me. Thanks.
Is there anything else for the, good to the order tonight? I will just comment on what. I will just comment on what went on, if it's the wishes of the board down the road here, we can make Al's suggestion of a proclamation, it can become an action item, it can be for discussion and we can act on that, and, you know, the board wishes that, please let Carrie and I know and, uh, we will work on that. Okay?
Yeah, I certainly, um, willing to work through, as Carrie said, through, uh, subcommittees and so on, but I, I think it's time that we get a little more aggressive in that area. We and, I'm hoping maybe the rest of the county schools would. And we'll get, uh, we'll get Dan Mau here and talk to him personally if we need to.
Try. All right, is there anything else? All right, just a, one more reminder that the next meeting is on a Tuesday, January twenty second, not Monday, it's Tuesday. Okay? Hearing nothing else? Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all.